Welcome to the 2022 Maui County Interviews. We have a whole series that we're doing and today we're fortunate to have Gabe Johnson, who has been on the county council seat and also for Lanai and also be going again for that seat. Gabe, welcome. Nice to have you here.
Thanks for having me, Paul. Happy to entertain any questions you guys have and have a very good discussion.
Well, let's, let's start with one about your experience that you just had. You've been on the county council now for about a year and a half. What are the things that you've actually been able to accomplish and do? Things that you say that, yes, I've made a difference here. Are there any things that really has helped move the needle at all?
Thanks for the question, Paul, and there's a lot I can do. I try to keep it under two minutes. A lot of things I can say that I did in the past year and a half, but I'll start with some of the ones that are more impactful into this housing, affordable housing crisis that we see, we see ourselves in. So the first thing I did that's that is I wrote Bill 111. Bill 111 in our county code is kind of, it's, it's making a preference to our local families to get in houses first. So basically, we do when I, when our affordable housing projects come up, we do lotteries and we pull, we would pull your, your name out for that house. Well, now we pull one house out with four names and we rank these four names by how long you've been a resident. So we have a preference as to how long you live in a Maui County resident. I think that's really important because a lot of times we see these affordable houses being sold off to the highest bidder and we still have this, this process, this problem we have where our locals are moving away to Vegas or other cheaper areas. Bill 111, Bill 111 changes that in many ways. It also allows us to choose our own lender when we go to buy an affordable housing project. It used to be the developers would say, come to our, come to our lender and we changed that with Bill 111. And the third thing is, well, there's a lot of things they did, but we also, you kind of, you put yourself on, the county will own this list. So this list that we're creating is a county owned list. So before the list was managed by, by the developers. So this is where we have much more transparency. So there's that, you know, Bill 111, Bill 111 is a big part of that, of my, of the work that I've done. The other one that I want to try to, you know, shake the tree and let everybody understand is the, is the Bill 61. And that's the uses of the Affordable Housing Fund. So as you know, we're one of the blessed counties that has money put aside from our budget for affordable housing. Not many other counties or districts or municipalities have that, but we're lucky to have it. So what we wanted to do is, okay, we recognize that infrastructure is one of the biggest costs to building homes, but a wastewater treatment plant causes, costs about $11 million. So we took a little bit of money out of the Affordable Housing Fund and we're gonna, I mean, that comes out of the general fund, but basically we, we made, we opened up the uses of the funds. So now, when you need, need a big, a mail, a big project like a wastewater treatment plant, you can use your affordable housing funds to buy bonds, to use that bond money to pay, to pay for the big infrastructure costs. So let's say you need a $11 million wastewater treatment plant. Well, you could take out your grant, your, your money from your bonds and then little by little pay it off with affordable housing fund money. And that's a really important thing because that loose, it loosens up the restrictions of what you can use for that money. The other thing we did, I did that I'm, I'm really excited about is I try to look at the root causes of homelessness and we, we understand that drug addiction and just general addictions is a way, a path to, you know, rock bottom. So we want to help those folks who need it with drug addiction. And we funded the design and permitting for the Aloha House 12 bedroom dorm. That's the Aloha House helps people get off addictions. And we now funded them to expand to a unit or a building that has 12 bedroom, 12 more bedrooms, 12 more beds for their dorms. So that will help, help, help people get off drugs and addiction. There's a lot more. This year budget, I just say, I can go, I can spend most of the time on the budget because we just got out of budget. But the process is that every council member had six priorities that we could put into the budget for, you know, to help, to fund. But we also had to have six alternate priorities in case some, some of our major priorities didn't get passed the council. We had, we had a list of ones that, well, if our six don't get in, then I can use this other list. Not only did all six of my priorities pass, two other council members picked up my alternate priorities and they used them for their six. So I had a total of eight priorities and that, and it's, that's unheard of because a lot of things we're talking about such as adult daycare center on Lanai, you know, such as funding a new division within our Department of Housing and Human Concerns. Within the department, we're going to have three new positions just focusing on affordable housing and that got funded.
Great. So Gabe, if I can, let me just, let me just ask a little follow on question to some of your issues that you've been focused on. As far as affordable housing, you did a study that shows that it's infrastructure that's really needed at this point in time. And you mentioned that some of the funds would be going towards infrastructure, but what's actually in the works right now? What's actually happening? Is the rubber meeting the road? Are we gonna get these areas? Have they been designated at this point in time where affordable housing will happen? And is there infrastructure funded and ready to go contract? So where are we at at this point in time with some of this real needs, crisis needs that we have?
Right. So I'm just gonna name two projects that are coming up in my committee in the next, before July. Hali Waipuilani, it's a 28 unit project going on in Kihei. And then there's Kui Kahi Village, that's 200 units in, I think it's in Waaluku. Those are projects that are coming out and we're going to have more projects coming on through my committee. But you want to say, but those are specific projects that are coming up. Now, within the budget, we, there was a section within the budget that the mayor wanted to spend some money for master planning of county owned lands. One of those county owned lands you might recall is Hanson Road. We just got that. You guys heard of the Hanson Road area where there's, there's, it looks like really close to infrastructure? Well, the mayor put in money to do a master plan for that county owned land. And he also did it for Waiala Road for another area and also the South Maui, 100 acres behind the Kihei Fire Station. So there, the mayor's putting in money in the budget for master planning. Now I piggybacked off of that budget proposal and added one more project, which is the Lanai Affordable Housing Project to come up with master planning money for that. So those are, I, you know, again, opening up the, the vows and allowing more uses of affordable housing fund was one thing, but you do need administration to spend that money, right? So as a council member, I can give them the ways to spend it. We just need the administration to actually go out there and issue the request for proposals and requests for qualifications. So I did on my end what I could to get them and I also built, made laws that allowed that as well. But it's, in the day, we really need mayor on board to start signing some, you know, agreements.
Thank you, thank you, Gabe, for that. And our next person will be asking questions is Lucie Anne Denne. Lucie Anne?
Great.
Thank you. I had to mute because I'm at home and there's noise here. I live in the country. You hear the chickens. Hi, Gabe. Thanks for that, you know, quick postage stamp of all those many hours of work that the council has put in. This is a very ambitious budget, especially, I would say it's a very people oriented budget. It's, it's a lot in here for kind of the everyday, you know, Jill and Joe on the street. I have a couple of questions. I'll, I'll start with one and I guess I'll, I'll have another round going around how, how we go. The first one is, how does your office deal with projects that are affordable or proposed to be affordable, but are located in areas where the community has really suggested it's not the best long range location? It might be a flood plain. It might be a natural drainage gulch. It might be adjacent to, you know, a highly polluted agricultural field, that kind of thing. So is there any kind of formula that your office uses when you're thinking about, you know, people come in to ask you to support their projects and where you give them some advice about whether your office is going to support these projects or not? Or there may be cultural issues or there may be land title issues even?
Well, that's, that's a line in the sand for me. I won't cross Lucie Anne as far as some of those things you mentioned. And in fact, I've told developers specifically, on a specific example, was up in Waiehi where there's a Hawaiian family saying that this is, you know, there's a land title dispute. And I told developer and I told, I said it in my, in my committee on record that I won't hear this project until the court case is settled. They, and the mayor even put money into the budget for that project. And during budget season, I took it out. You know, they were going to use affordable housing funding and, and I, I took that money out and put it back into the pot because there's no way you're going to get me to have a here, here, a project in my committee to take away Hawaiian lands from Hawaiians to put on low income folks, which is just, that's a, that's a false narrative, that's a false choice to begin with. So there are times in that I'll, I'll just say that we won't hear that. We won't hear that project. There's a couple red lines in the sand and I won't, I won't cross, you know?
And how do you get yourself informed on projects that may be in a sensitive location? Like I watched a project be approved at the Planning Commission and, you know, 25 people gave evidence of flooding on the site. And one person, the owner says, oh no, my dad had this property for years. It never floods. And the Planning Commission says, well, the owner probably knows his property and voted to approve it. So how do you make your choices?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm a collaborator. I, for that specific example, I brought in the Hawaiian home, the Hawaiians who had a claim. I had a meeting with them. They told me all the history. They gave me all the paperwork. They, they discussed it with me and then I brought in the developer and let him, and you know, I let them explain their side. And it's just, there's sometimes, you know, you have to, you have to make your decisions based off a moral framework. Is it right to do that? I don't think it is. I don't think it's right to kick people off land to put on low, low income housing, you know, affordable housing projects on it. I just don't think it's right. So I just said, after having a meeting with both of you guys, I won't hear it until in my committee, but maybe next year, when the letter settlements solved, if they solve that through the case in the court, then maybe we can say, okay, let's revisit this. But there's no way while it's, you know, being litigated, we would do something like that. And that could be a lot of different problems.
Many of the areas with environmental constraints, the people around are just, you know, average working people. They're not going to go to court. They don't understand the process. So you can't point and say, oh, I'll, I'll hear this when the court case is going to be resolved. So what other tools are in the toolbox? It's going to be a system of, you know, hey, if, if people in the area say this area floods, even if FEMA says it's okay, I think we ought to believe who lives here. I mean, how, how, how is it decided?
Well, I, I'll speak for myself, but I also, you know, I see with my own two eyes and I'm sure you guys see it. Testimony does affect this council. It does affect me. I, I listen to the people who live, who are going to live next door to that project. They have, they have swayed my needle in many ways when, when testifiers come in and that's the way it should be, right? You, testifiers only have three minutes and they, you know, they don't have much time to sell their case, but the fact that they're there, the fact that they're testifying on, in their neighborhood, that their words hold water with me. So especially when they're organized, right? Especially when you get a group of people all in that neighborhood saying, hey, you know, this place floods or hey, you know, I worked plantation days and there was chemicals all over that field, right? That's, that's how it should be. We have to listen to our community and they do put a thumb on the scale on our decision making because we can't know everything. That's the truth. But we can hear what the historical knowledge and all of the people's, you know, eyewitness accounts that all matters.
Thank you. Onto our next questionnaire.
Great. And that'll be Mark Joyner will be next.
Yeah. Aloha, Gabe. How are you?
Aloha, Mark.
Good to see you. I, actually you stole most of my thunder. You talked about eight different priorities that were addressed. I only heard four of them. Just curious as to what the other four were. And then, and then I had an additional question.
Oh my God, you put me on the spot. Okay. I think I wrote it down. I should have, I should have have it on a little here, one minute. Okay. So, okay, as far as, oh, this is a good one. The PALS, okay, so we have Summers PALS program, right? Summers PALS is when, when the school's out for summer and winter, we've hired teachers to take care of our kids. Those people are making 10 bucks an hour. So that's not even livable wage. With a college degree, they were going to pay them 15 bucks an hour. So I, I looked into it. It turns out all the people who work for PALS are non-union, part timers. So it's really up to the Department of Parks in our county on what they pay them. So I put in, I think it was $290,000 to increase their wages. I know it was over 250, so we can look it up, but it was increase their wages to minimum $15 an hour. So to raise those people making 10 bucks an hour to 15 is significant and it starts this year, July, or you know, it starts for this Summers Program. So we're, you know, they're going to be getting a big raise. So that's one of them. I'm really excited about that. Let's see here. So increase the Affordable Housing Fund to 58 million. I think the mayor proposed 54, so we brought it up to 58. So that's the other one. So within your Affordable Housing Fund, like it's real strict on what it can be spent for, but we could, we, with that Bill 61, we allowed it to also spend money out of that Affordable Housing Fund to, to make a homeless, homeless plan. Like what do we do with houseless people and homeless people? So we need a plan. And now I, that was one of the priorities I put in was to create a homeless plan for Maui County and Tasha Kama picked that one up. And the other one that Councilmember Kenny Rollins Fernandez picked up was, you guys remember the, the micro grants for farmers? It was 1.5 million dollars. And it was very successful. During the pandemic, a lot of farmers use that money to, you know, buy a new tractor and whatever. It was 1.5 mil. My proposal was to bring it up to 3 million, double it. And Councilmember Kenny Rollins Fernandez picked that one up, double that.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, that's terrific. I, I guess my additional question along sort of the same line is, what are some priorities or do you have priority? I'm sure you do. Heading into this next session that you would like to see addressed, maybe, maybe just one or two that you're not seeing addressed now. It sounds like you've been incredibly successful.
The next session is to, well, okay, hopefully, you know, we, everyone votes and I come in and you also vote on the bifurcation of the Department of Housing. So if that happens, then I expect next year, our, my committee will be, if I'm the chair of Affordable Housing and will be flooded with new projects because we're going to have, we're going to have the department pushing out requests for proposals much faster and, and, and a need where I've said it before, if your hair is on fire, you best act like it. And right now we have a affordable housing crisis and with new subdivision within the Department of Housing. And then if we bifurcate that where it's now just straight housing with these, you know, staff that just move right over, I think we have, we could go at a really faster rate. So I expect my, my committee to be seeing a lot of, a lot of affordable housing projects coming through. That being said, one of the most important ones that I'm trying to push for is the Lanai Affordable Housing Project. You guys know that that's, you know, we haven't had affordable housing project on this island for 30 years. So it, we really struggle with that. So as far, as far as, and as in addition to some of those other projects, I would love to see the mayor move on like the 100 acres in South, South Key, you know, the, behind the police station in South Maui, Hanson Road, you know, other down the list. But then also coming, coming in next year, it takes, it takes about three to four months to write a, a bill, right? To pass it all out. I have to do a project assignment form. I have to research it. We bring in my committee. We bring in the experts. I, I try to bring the departments as well and say, hey, help me write this bill. Because it used to be, be like, this is the council's bill and, you know, the department's going to be naturally against it. I don't want it to be like that. I want to work collaboratively and have, in fact, I just came out of a meeting, and again, I'm getting on a tangent, but I just came out of a meeting with all the departments of county, water, DEM, all the departments in regards to affordable housing. How do we make a Department of Hawaiian Homelands fast track? We, we make a Hawaiian homestead fast tracking because we do it for 208. We do it for developers. Why can't we do it for our Hawaiian brothers, sisters? And especially they got that huge pot of money from the state, right? They gave them $600 million. So let's do a fast track for Hawaiian homes. And that's going to take some time again, because like I was saying, it takes three to four months to write a bill and to do something as comprehensive as trying to work with a state entity, you know, to get and follow, you know, and it turns out they don't have to follow county codes, but you know, we, we're trying to get them fast tracked and see what we can do. And that's going to take some time. It's going to take a lot of meetings and a lot of discussion. And so, yeah, I would like to see that happen in the next, next coming term where we have a fast track version for Hawaiian homelands.
That's, that's absolutely wonderful. I, I just might add really quickly that I've had a number of people ask me about the homeless and about affordable housing and, and your name always comes up and they're always a little shocked that our representative from one of the most remote islands is, is on top of the entire thing and, and indeed on top well. So thank you, Gabe.
Thank you, Mark.
Aloha.
Our next interviewer will be Anne, this case week.
Aloha, Gabe. Good to see you. I just, I just recently read in Maui time that they, Maui County offered to swap infrastructure for affordable housing. And this isn't county owned land. It's a developer for the, oh, what do they call that? It's called the Waikapu Country Town Development. Yeah. They were wanting to build a sewage treatment plant there and also improved roads. And do you have any confidence in developers that offer affordable housing as part of their plan that they would do, that the county would help do this in the future? I know this is a really big development. I can't remember how many homes involved, but for those of you don't know, it's where the Maui Tropical Plantation is around there, both sides of that highway there. What do you think of that? Has any other developer offered, their county offered it as for any other developers?
So let's, let's be real, not all developers are created equal, right? There's some really good developers out there though. And I will say, there's one developer who I really was impressed with the way they do it is they'll get a pot of money from the county and go to the state and say, look, the county bought in. So the state will do matching funds and then they'll go to the feds and do matching funds with the feds. So there's developers who can get a, these big infrastructure costs done without a public prior partnership, right? They just go and know the uses of funds and they go and get, get, you know, all these tax credits and all these monies that helps them. All of a sudden they can build a wastewater treatment plant. They can build water systems, you know, they can build the roads. And we have examples of that here in Maui County, right? Of projects that have done that. Now, when you talk about Mike Atherton's project, where it was basically a public prior partnership, as you know, that's a very long project. That project has been around way before I got, it's, I haven't, I wasn't there in the beginning. It just kind of came, I came on and they're like, yeah, this is a public prior partnership now to doing. And there's a lot of reasons why, like there was a, he, Mike Atherton had to build a wastewater treatment plant for his project to get done. And he said, well, that will kill my project. So somehow he got the state to build the school and then the county will build a wastewater. And now then there's a road involved. So it seems like that that's one way to do it. I don't like, so when it comes to like, you know, are, do you have, are you asking me if I have confidence in it? I'll be honest, it's my first ever public prior partnership that I, I'm experiencing as a council member. So we'll see. But I know one thing that, that brought me a great surprise and I'm really happy with it was when Mike Atherton did come before council, I proposed an idea to him because this is considered a project area he wants to build on, right? It's a project. If he would be considering HUD project vouchers, where the vouchers would be tied to that project area. And that way we could get more affordable house, more people in need living in those homes. And he said he was totally on board with that. So that kind of makes me happy. Like, yeah, sure, you might build some, a lot of market rates, but if you're allowed, allowing HUD vouchers in there for a project based HUD voucher system, then we could even get more affordable housing, more people home. So that kind of is a good, a good sign.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Our next person will be Alan Lloyd.
Aloha, Gabe. Thanks for participating in this. So I'm going to switch topics here and what do you think the minimum wage should be in 2022 on Maui?
The minimum wage should be a livable wage. And right now the, the data behind that is $33 an hour. Okay. So I wrote a state bill HB 1440 and it went to the state, you know, through the county council can give laws to the state and then legislative package and say, here's some laws we'd like to state to pass. The bill that I wrote was HB 1440 to increase the minimum wage. Not every 10 years, not every eight years, not when the economy is good or when the economy is bad. We do it every year. We reevaluate what is a livable wage? Why have this politically contentious debate every 15 years? So we'll do it every year. It'll be data driven. It'll say this is the, this year, you know, the hotels were full. We can afford more. This year the hotel's not so good. We're going to keep it stagnant, right? So that, that was as close as I could get to a, a, what's that word did they call it? Universal Basic Income, UBI's, right? As close as you can get to like basically a UBI where you're basically saying, this is the minimum, this is what we set and we set it every year. So that way it's, it takes the politics out of it. It's just data driven. So $33 is, is what the date is telling us to live.
Okay. And then a follow up question is, would you work at the county level to increase the, we'll call it the minimum wage right now? So either to speed up the timeline that the state has already set that will be signed by the governor, or to actually set a floor for the wages that's higher than the state has set? And so will you work at the county level to do that?
Yes. And like you remember in my budget priority where we raised PALS workers from $10 to 15 an hour. I could have only done that if they were non-union and they were, you know, had no, no workers rights. For some reason, the union pushes back when I try to raise their wages because it's all based off of bargaining, right? So then they are like, hold, hold on, slow, slow your roll. I'm like, but would you say no to have your workers being paid more? No, we wouldn't say that. But there's complications in the back scene of like, how do we do, how we get, how we negotiate? So I said, okay, how about this for a proposal? How about we say that if you receive a grant, a county grant, anybody who receives a county grant and you have employees, you must play your, pay your employees a minimum $15 an hour or whatever we think would, would be applicable. So that's something I did a project assignment form on, we're working on that. And it got a little tricky because again, it goes back to the idea of unions and it goes back to those folks that, you know, there are, there are nonprofits that do take county money that pay their workers next to nothing, like the Boys and Girls Club or, you know, even our summer piles, we're paying 10 bucks an hour. So how do you, you know, how do you ask them to pay more for their workers when they're not buying and selling, you know, they're not, they're not like making hand over fist? Well, the way I say it is, well, tell us lobby the state to raise those wages so we can. And that's why I wrote HB 1440. But surprisingly, surprising to me when I first found that out that I had to go, it was a little bit harder to raise wages in-house than I thought it would be. Cause like you were saying, Alan, is why, let's lead, let's lead by example and say, let's have the county pay its workers a fair wage. No one should be making 10 bucks an hour in the county. And that's when we were looking, who does make 10 bucks an hour in a county? Well, it turns, turns out it was PALS. Well, let's raise them up. Bottom up economics. That's what I'm talking about. Set it top down.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Great. Thank you, Alan. And Gabe, I'll ask the next questions.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, first of all, we have a whole issue here in our county of state control over many of our issues and resources. Some of the things that are so important for our county, yet it's controlled by state legislators and what happens in Oahu. What's your stance on home rule versus more state rule?
Obviously I'm for more home rule, right? You know? We had that back in the GMO moratorium. I remember that debate. And I just, you know, for me as a council member, I want to have a very open door policy with my state, you know, state level, state level representatives. Because if, if we work together, it's so, it's so much easier. It makes so much sense, you know, so much more sense. But when we don't work with each other, it, it, nothing will ever get done. And you wonder why, you know, things aren't getting done. Well, because they're, we're all living in silos, right? And I, I have a hard enough time trying to get the county level to not work in silos. Imagine the state, you know? There's an expression here that says, you know, Maui thinks politics here is all Oahu centric. Well, I live on Lanai and we think all politics is Maui centric. It always seems to be the, the city centers are deciding what is, what is to be done. And if ever there was an example of that, that's our state, our state, right? Honolulu decides the outer islands. How do we do that? Well, I, I don't know. We, hopefully we can add, uh, I would love to work with a state rep to work on something like that. But it would take us, it wouldn't, it can't just, you know, be just gave, you know, I, we need to have a coalition.
So Gabe, let me ask another question about this election process. I mean, you're in kind of a, a kind of a vulnerable area in terms of contractors and looking at getting jobs and work and things like that. And my question has to do about your campaign funding. Certainly there are, uh, histories of people getting a lot of money from different factions, uh, in their campaign. Can you explain what your main funding source is and, uh, how you're receiving your, your main source of funding at this time?
I think I have like $1,800 in my account right now for my campaign spending. Okay. So you're talking about money in politics? Is that your basically question? All right.
That's, that's, that's the question.
If you go down the list of, of who won the election and how much they spent, you'll find in 99% of the races historically, the more the person with the most money wins the race, right? Now that, there's a couple of exceptions throughout the years, but in 2016, 2018, 2020, that is starting to change. The grassroots candidates have been starting to win, right? This is one of those few, few times in our, in our history that, that the, he or she with the biggest purse isn't always going to win. My last election, my opponent raised way more than I did. And there was a super PAC against me raising in, in those hundred thousands and they, and I won through, uh, you know, my grassroots campaigning with, you know, you guys were there, you know how, what we all did. So, um, so that's the thing is historically, yes, money has been the milk of politics, right? But nowadays with this idea of a slate, the idea of, you know, uh, a group of people uh, and the idea, and plus the way we campaign, right? Like, you know, sign waving is one thing, signage, all that stuff. But you know, with the digital technology, you can do social media, right? Social media is a great way to get, get, you know, reach, you, get your message out. And I, everybody, I, I got a big social media presence that's free, you know, I, I'm my own campaign manager for that, right? So it, it's, it's tricky because just because you want a couple from 2016 to now, doesn't mean that that system's going to go away. It still could, sorry, I hear my, hear my dog snoring and making noise. But just because you want to, well, you know, a couple of people, a couple of grassroots have won, doesn't change that fact that there's still a whole lot of money in politics. There's a whole lot of super PACs out there. There's a whole lot of PACs out there. And I, I'm like, I'm, I, I, I know, uh, I'll do what I can, but big money is going to be there, you know?
That's true. That's very true. And, uh, but again, I, I just wanted to look at the contrast of where you're at versus maybe some other candidates. Next, Lucien would be next.
Well, hello, Paul. All right. I am unmuted. I have, I have a whole pile of questions here. Of course, a lot of them are around affordable housing. Uh, one of the, one of the ones that always comes up about affordable housing is how do we find the right length of time for housing that has been supported through affordable housing funds? Or through this, this new, uh, arm of infrastructure investment? Are these houses going to be back on the market at, uh, regular prices in 10 years?
Right.
Or is there a sweet spot where people who buy a house, who, who are getting a deal, but still it's the biggest investment of your life and they're paying a mortgage, can make money if they do choose to sell it in a, a shorter period of time, but that it remains affordable? Do we have that mechanism down? Or do we need to have a way like the, the Holly Land Trust does where, um, housing is more affordable in perpetuity?
Right. So one thing, uh, in the budget, we, we've made a grant to do, to give the, uh, Hawaii Community Foundation. That was one of my other priorities that got in, uh, that went, that they're going to do like, uh, like a deed defer, like a deferment, mortgage deferment. You know that they're going to help with that. You know, the idea, okay, this is, I want to have it so that the, if we, if you're, if it, the developers tell us it costs $550,000 to build a house right now. That's the most recent number. A dishwasher cannot afford $550,000. But if the county put in a hundred grand or 200 grand and bought it down, if you put in 200 grand, it becomes a $350,000 house, right? So then you can say, okay, that money, that 200 grand is tied to that house, right? So when they sell that house, they're not going to have that big profit. But at least that money will be there to keep that house cheap in perpetuity. There's a really tricky argue, like there's a change of the way our, our market is towards housing, right? So it used to be you buy a little house, you save up and you use that equity, you put in that little house to buy a medium house. And it's like starter homes, right? You built, you work your way up. Now, if you get in affordable housing, you have to stay in there because you, if you sell, try to buy a market house, it just ain't going to happen, right? You're, the 1.1 million is the average house. So, so people are like staying in their, in their units. Because if they do sell their unit and get that big chunk of money, it ain't going to be enough to buy a market rate here. So what they do is, and we all see this, they'll buy, buy a market rate in Vegas. Right? So now we, we've, we've exasperated. We lost our housing inventory for that affordable house and we lost a worker. So we're exasperating the problem, right? So that's why I think the idea of having mortgage deferred payments, having people get in, you know, having the nonprofits help them with their finances. And you, and the county money that we put in, because that has to be big subsidies we plan to put into these homes. 200 grand per house, that's a lot of money.
Yes.
Keep it in there because if we just flip it out, then the solution is build your way out of it. And nobody, I, I, well, I don't want to build my way out of it. Then we don't have the resources for that, right? So, so the way we do it is our inventory we have is precious and we keep it is in perpetuity. And by doing that, as I'm saying, have the 200 grand tied to the lien.
So what you're saying is that, um, that 200 grand then, then goes towards the price of the next buyer buying into it? But what if the price has jumped because there's no, there's no ceiling on the price? So suppose buyer A, it was 500,000 and they paid 300,000. Buyer B is going to pay 700 or 800,000 and then the 200,000 brings it down to 600,000.
Right.
Is that really going to be like 10, 15, 20 years from now? Is, are we going to have skill village, you know, uh, out of the reach of the average family that used to live there, uh, that kind of thing?
That's only if the county doesn't do its due diligence. And that's what's happening out in, um, Aspen, Colorado. You have to look at it yearly. You have to look at the price guidelines yearly. You've got to look at the interest rates yearly. You got to come up with formula yearly. You know, the, the homes, the values are moving all over the place, right? So they, they're just going up and up. And so we, we, we have to constantly be, you know, the system isn't going to fix itself. We have to be nimble with the, 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 uh, in the money we put in. And like right now, I'm looking at like, okay, let's fix the price guidelines. May 24th is my next big meeting. We're going to be talking about price guidelines, right? But we're also learning about the interest rates. If the county put money on interest rates, put, put money down to drop, like let's say your interest rates is five. If the county dropped it down two points to 3%,
Yeah.
then that person buying that house, that's a $500 a month difference in, in their costs. And they're, and, and the county only added about 20 grand or 15 grand to that by fixing the interest rates. We're only putting a little bit in as opposing of putting a big $200 chunk into that or 200 grand chunk into that. The interest rates will really affect the amount of month, you know, the month you pay, your monthly. And some people who are looking, who are desperate browsing, they care just as much about the monthly, you know?
Yeah. Well, it's, it's the bottom line. Well, thank, thank you. I know others have questions. I, I, I could give you 10 more because I'm in the weeds here, but, uh, I will, uh, let it move on to Mark.
Okay, Mark, you're next.
Okay, great. Hey, um, Gabe, um, we, we've kind of narrowed the conversation to, uh, issues around housing and homelessness and that sort of thing. Um, I'm just kind of wondering, uh, for this next session, what other kinds of huge priorities that you would like to see addressed or even just priorities?
That's not enough to be on my plate. You want to give me? No, okay.
Hey, you know about me and rocks in a backpack.
I, I, um, okay. So this is just a quick story. I, I'll try to answer your question quickly. But you know, I was walking around beautiful Lanai city. It's a walkable town. And no one's out, you know, everybody's in their house and you know, it's like, no one's out. But when I walk past the park, everybody's at the park. There's a gym there. They're working out. The kids are playing basketball at the park. You know, it's outdoor. Everybody's enjoying the park. And I'm like, man, we have such a high use park here. And then I go down a little street and there's a county park and it's all rundown and dilapidated. And we need, I would like to really help with the, the idea of making our communities more, you know, enjoying the outdoors, having better parks, better, you know, better walk system, you know, things that are in the county's purview, like a jogging trail and things to get people out of their house and, you know, exercise. So that's, that's something besides housing. I really would like to see our parks be up, updated. You know, we got a skate park coming up here on Lanai that I fought real hard for. To have a skate park, have some kind of alternate things. Our, our tennis courts, a couple of them are now doing pickleball. Maui's doing pickleball. You know, let's, let's kind of have that, you know?
Yeah. I, I just got a real lesson on pickleball this morning from, uh, Alan, actually. So that, that sounds fantastic. Okay. Uh, thanks, Gabe. I'll pass it on.
Okay. Uh, Anne, you'll be next.
Okay. Uh, oh, and I'm assuming Gabe, that's Lanai in the background, in your virtual background. Oh, beautiful. Now I wanted to ask you, I saw a recent urge, well, recent was in March to, uh, do, uh, for tax reform. And one of that was imposing an increase in property taxes for people who, for people who are here by for investment or non homeowner occupied. And, and I just, I don't know if that's updated, if that's voted on yet, or what is your thoughts on that? Because that is a revenue for, for affordable housing, is it not?
You're talking about raising taxes on non owner?
Property tax, property tax. I mean, they are really low, right? And it's thought that that's an incentive for people, uh, from the mainland to buy because the property taxes are so low.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so this year's budget, uh, it's funny, my last year's budget, when I first won, I, I guess I was the troublemaker because we stayed up till 11 at night trying to hash out the tax rates. When I was trying to put $20 million in the affordable housing fund. And I'm glad that the mayor followed my lead and now he put in 7% of our overall budget goes in the affordable housing fund. So he did put money in it. But, um, uh, so as far as the rates on, you know, there's the debate to say, yeah, we, we want to kind of, uh, you know, the carrot of the stick. Low property taxes on our land when we, when we think you're doing good use of the land. High property when it's a burden or a high property tax when it's a burden, right? And that disincentivizes, you know, investment properties and that kind of in the likes. I, I am, I, you know, I, I don't know, they quoted me in the Maui news, but I, I say this a lot is I'm for tax fairness and tax fairness doesn't mean that everybody's treated the same. Tax fairness means that everyone's needs are being met. And if you're an investor in our, in our, in our houses, in our housing inventory, then understand that you're going to be affecting our, our, our community. So you're going to have to pay a higher tax for us to, to help out with the burden or, you know, the impacts that the investors are doing. So I was for raising taxes on investor properties for non owner occupies and giving them ways out such as if you, okay, you, you own it, but you, if you rent it long-term, you get a discount, right? That's in, in the, we, we passed that, right? So
Okay.
We, we allowed, even if you're, you know, as long as you just don't leave it vacant. We were having the discussions on having vacant, a vacancy tax. We're not there yet. Maybe next year, maybe a couple of years, but a vacancy tax could be one way. So yeah, I, I think we, we allow, we, we're able to raise the taxes high enough to get, I mean, look at our budget. It's a pretty big budget. But also we kept taxes low for those folks who are living in their homes, right? Cause, cause remember their houses, they didn't do nothing in their house, but it's been, the value of their house has been getting high. Therefore the property tax is getting higher, you know? And that's, that, that being said, our property taxes across the state is lowest in the nation, right? Texas has a higher property tax than, than Hawaii and Texans hate taxes. So, uh, yeah.
Okay. Good points. Thanks. Thank you.
Great. We'll do Alan next and we'll make it brief because, uh, we have other interviewers.
Okay.
All right. Hi, Gabe. Again, so I'm going to go off of housing. Well, uh, some of these policy housing questions. And, um, so rents are very high and getting higher. Um, and so people are obviously doubling and tripling up and working double and triple jobs. So that's residential rents. And for many small businesses, we have commercial rents and rent is sometimes the first, highest cost, sometimes the second highest cost. So what are your thoughts about both commercial and residential rent control?
Like you're reading my mind, Alan. Okay. So I put in a PAF, a project assignments form on how we do rent controls. Uh, that's going through our OCS, our Office of Council Services. They're, they're all of our, our researchers and lawyers and people who are going to study, they study other policies. So I said, can you go and look at other municipalities and see what's being done? And maybe we can do some form of rent control. Now that's going to be a big discussion, big hot topic, if, if that's even going to fit for our community. But I'll tell you this, I live on Lanai. Ellison wants to do a whole lot of projects here, but you don't have enough construction workers. So he imported all those construction workers to do these full jobs. Now, the person who I was living with and my roommate was living with, she said, yeah, I have like five houses here and I rented out for 2,000, but Palama just said we'll pay 3,000 a month. So what am I going to do? Of course I'm going to, you know, rent it out to the highest bidder. So all the locals had to go move out while the construction workers came in and did these projects, right? And that, we only have, you know, about 1,200 households in the whole island of Lanai. So this is significant what they're, what's happening. There are literally people, you know, knocking on my door. I, I don't have a place to live, right? So if we were to say, look, okay, starting this year, you cannot do like a 10% increase in rent every year max or something like that. Like we, it's still in the infancy stages of making any kind of policy. But I did ask the guys to go out and do a research, you know, go find out what other municipalities are doing. So I'm not really ready to say, here's what we plan to do because we're still in the planning stages.
Great. Thank you.
And thank you, Gabe, for all of these, uh, questions that you just got barraged with and answering them. I guess, is there any other thing that we haven't covered that you'd like to conclude with? Any other statements that you'd like to make before we end?
No, I just, uh, No, I just, I mean, you guys might know me from last time, but you know, I'm a father, single father. I was a farmer. I was living in low income way, a house before I, I took the job. So I know, I know what it's like to, you know, live in these units that are getting light tech funds, you know? It's, it's really, it's, those were my neighbors. Those were my people, you know? So I, I, that's kind of the way I look at the world through that lens is that how do we help those folks who need it the most? They, they, we, I, I, I live on Lanai. You want to see income inequality. We, you know, we have the fifth richest man in, in the world, right? And then we have people here who can't even, you know, can't even find an old dorm from the plantation days or a 500 square foot home built in 1930. You know, those, that's the reality that we, we facing right here, you know? So that's why, that's who I fight for. That's the flag I carry and I hope for you guys to support in this upcoming election.
Okay. And when, for those who are going to vote, you can vote for all of the county council members, including Lanai, where Gabe is from. But please get out there and vote and thank you for watching so that you can be an informed voter. Mahalo.